Any of you has written and has got any comments or corrections? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, so the motion of the previous meeting is approved. With that, we're going to get started with the first regular meeting case. And Mr. Boone's not here, but Adina would be kind enough to help us with that. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. The first item on your agenda is the replat of College Heights Sedition. I'm going to go ahead and put that on the board for you. Mr. Rowe of Mark Whitley Associates has requested approval of a replat of the south twenty-seven point seven feet of Lot one and all of lots two through three into lots one A and two A of Block one College Heights Sedition, located in Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intention of the plat is to divide the property between the houses located at five-ten and five-twenty campus. There are no new setback issues created by this plat. However, per Public Works, the proposed configuration does not provide access or easements to the existing sewer service lines directly from the city main as required by section twenty-six point oh-three oh-one of the subdivision ordinance. But Mr. Rowe did come back and change his plan and add the easement that you see at the north end of the building, of the property, on the west side there, to accommodate that issue. I received one response in favor and zero in opposition. And Mr. Rowe is here, if you have any questions of him.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the lady?
What was the one in opposition about?
Did I say in opposition?
Uh-huh.
I have one in favor, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
None in opposition.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rowe? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm with Mark Whitley and Associates, thirty-two fifty East Tex Freeway. As Adina said, there's a couple of houses on this property. Many of you who've been in Beaumont for a long time will notice the name, or remember the name of John Rainey. Mr. Rainey was with Lamar Bank for years out on Avenue A. Mr. Rainey now, in later years in life, is trying to divest of some of the property he owns. And I think he and his family have owned this tract since the late fifties, early sixties. And so for him to be able to sell these homes, we needed to prepare this plat because these two houses were sitting on common property. So that's kind of the background.
Great. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant. Is there a motion?
So moved to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Noyola, and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Adina?
The second item on your agenda is another replat. Sorry. And it's a replat of Lot nineteen into lots nineteen A and nineteen B, Block five of Pine Island Estates, Jefferson County, Texas. Mr. Bracken of Fitz and Shipman requested the approval of the plat. And the property is located in a development off South Pine Island Road. It's in our ETJ. And the intention of the plat is to divide an almost two-acre property into two lots. I did see that we have a representation from Fitz and Shipman in the audience. If you have other questions, is there anything else you'd like to ask me?
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
I did show one in favor. I got it right that time.
Perfect. Good. And the applicant? I didn't wake you up, did I?
Almost.
Okay.
My name is Don King with Fitz and Shipman Engineers in Beaumont. This is located in the ETJ of Beaumont, way out off of Pine Island Road. And like I say, it's a desire of the applicant to divide it into two lots. So with that said, just answer any questions you might have.
And the access is from where to both of these lots?
On the drawing that you see up there, on the right-hand side, there's a road called Foxtail Trail that runs along there. The other side of the lots, they back up to a pipeline. So it's basically one access to the lot.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. King. Any questions for the gentleman? No? It's always good to see you, Mr. King. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Nobody's volunteering, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from Mr. King and also the city staff, and I would entertain the motion.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Stein, again. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Thank you, sir. And any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Well, folks, we're going to wait a little bit for the city council to have a quorum, and we'll get started again. Thank you. Okay, so do we, we have room that they can separate in here?
Well, if you want them coming out, what kind of plan? They're out there.
We have, we have room to set them separated, so it'd be a lot easier if you don't mind just instruct them where to sit, and we get, we get going.
Need my help with that?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Where's the mask? Where's the mask?
I wanted to get it. But never said it.
As long as you can suck it in.
So you're all fine?
Yeah.
How are they doing?
Not much.
Doesn't really go as good.
Separation.
Yeah, separation. Not supposed to let, let it switch off with maybe getting channels involved.
Also, that's a case. Yes, I've, I've.
Which air hall were you in?
Uh, five.
At home?
Uh, this past couple of few months.
Did any of you receive notices? In the way? No, I'm sorry, because if they're.
You had to go to Dallas and then, yeah. Yeah, better. So how do they keep the separation? Is it like every other seat or?
No, that's not the American, uh, what I did, but not much because, you know, they're just, obviously they're not selling that many tickets. They try to leave, you know, seat full and you're not going to find them.
Yeah, wow.
So they're not even any center on the American card, which doesn't know, uh, last month, Black American was jammed by.
Every seat was full, even the millions? Wow.
Do you still have that list?
They have paper filter and all that.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I want to get that list, the menu addresses.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to have them put your addresses on the sheet online.
No, I don't mind at all. So, uh.
Yeah, the air filters, whatever, five minutes or three minutes?
Could you just please write your address next to the waiting room? Because it's passing.
Oh, yeah.
She got you. Something that we used to run.
I bet you approved. Oh. Oh. Oh, you may be contagious. Makes it even worse. Does she bring you meals out? Oh, good. Kitchen? That would sound great. It'd be like a reunion when you can finally get back together.
We don't know. I guess, yes, but.
Ladies and gentlemen, in case you're wondering, we're waiting for the city council to have a quorum, and then we get started. Uh?
We had one.
We had one?
He disappeared. Yeah, he was here.
Oh, he stepped out. He got a phone call.
Okay.
I want to know where you get those masks at the end, or how come we don't get one?
HR problem, uh, so.
Well, that was quick.
You got the jangers.
Just for the jagers?
The jagers.
Are the masks just for the exacting of the city or?
Very special.
Very special.
They brought them all the special. See, even council person doesn't have one.
It's got your name on it.
He didn't want to wear it.
He didn't want to wear it. They're talking about these pants. Wouldn't that how we got them?
Can't drink coffee through them.
Mm-mm. Oh. So, some phone calls. And I would.
You did call this one, you called this morning, so. We remind you.
He's doing really good. I mean, yeah, he's doing great. Memory's back. He's got his weird lawyer sense of humor back. He's doing great. He had Lucas. Man, I'm telling you.
Everybody came out fine.
But. How? Who? Oh, I think he's doing a really good job. Oh. Yes, he's a smart guy. And I think he's trying to get everybody organized. And we need it. Because it's just right around the corner before this happens.
Give me this to you, I think it might. Oh, you're not?
Oh, I think we're still working on the. Of course, I'm going to. Yeah. But it's the, the. Do I? I don't know. I mean, we are so limited, but we can do that. It's strange, and phone calls and emails and stuff like that. We're just going to see what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. It's real different.
There's nobody who needs to get.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be a lot of people to zoom on, but.
I didn't tell you about that, but for such a good subject, there's somebody that's just. I believe so. It was.
Yeah, well, once you're swept back to it.
It might have been either.
But she'd be on her. She hasn't.
All right, guys. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and good afternoon again. We are going to continue with our joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning and the City of Beaumont. And now the honorable Mayor Becky Ames is going to get us started.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames?
Here.
Mayor Protem Felchaw?
Present.
Councilmember Pate is absent. Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Samuel absent, and Councilmember Muton absent.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the joint public meeting of the Planning Commission and Beaumont City Council. We're here today to consider files that are in front of us that will, today, what will happen is the Planning and Zoning Commission will consider these items, and they will vote on each item. That will be a recommendation to the council. Then, in about two weeks, it will come before the council for the final decision. However, when it comes before the council, it's not available for comment. Today is the public hearing. So if you have something to say about any of these items, please do so today. Because when it comes before the city council, it will not be open for comment, but you're always welcome to call your members. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to get started with our case twenty-four fifteen P. Adina?
Oh, my Thomas, sir. Twenty-four fifteen P is a request for a specific use permit to allow a gaming facility in general commercial multiple-family dwelling zoning district. Jisam? Would you like to pronounce it? McEnoya? Has requested a specific use permit to allow a gaming facility at forty-seven oh-five Magnolia Avenue. The applicant wishes to have fifty gaming machines at this location. The hours of operation for the business would be eight AM to ten PM. Security will be provided by onsite surveillance, but there was no mention of which age groups would be allowed in certain areas or for what time periods. It should be noted that gaming facilities that have five or fewer machines tend to be centered, considered accessory in nature when part of a primary use, and as such, tend to result in fewer negative impacts on surrounding land uses. However, larger gaming rooms with dozens of machines take on the scale of a small casino and, as a result, require careful consideration as to their location and compatibility with surrounding land uses. Some of these considerations include capability, compatibility with other land uses, noise, traffic, as well as safety considerations. As such, proximity to parks, schools, and especially residential uses should be carefully considered in the review of the gaming facility. This property is immediately adjacent to residential neighborhoods and residential single-family dwellings, and is within the vicinity of the Lucas Pre-K Center. As you can see in the map on the screen, the property in question is outlined in red. And you can see immediately adjacent to it, to the west, is residential zoning district and residences. It's a scenario view showing you a different view of the property outlined in red. And the site plan submitted for the property to give you an idea how it fits into that neighborhood. This is a photo of the subject property. And this is the subject property's parking lot. This is the property to the north. To the northeast. To the east. To the southeast. This property to the south. Southwest. To the west. And backing up to the property from the west. I'd also like to show you a slide that gives you an idea as to how close Lucas Elementary is to the property. You can see the property outlined in red in the lower left-hand corner of the screen, and Lucas Elementary is labeled.
And your recommendation?
Staff is recommending denial of the request based on its proximity to the residential neighborhood.
All right. Any questions for Adina?
I did receive four responses in opposition to this and zero in favor. Would you like to hear what they had to say, or?
Uh, if you don't mind, just briefly. Give us the highlight.
One says, I have no interest in any project in this neighborhood.
These are verified that are neighbors within two hundred feet.
These are neighbors that we sent notices to within two hundred feet.
Okay.
So we sent out twenty-seven notices, and these are four of those notices.
All right.
This community needs viable businesses that support the needs of the community, not one designed to suck the finances out of it. And don't want any large game room in this site. And that's basically the responses that I received.
Thank you very much. And the applicant is Mr. McEnoya.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you today?
Doing good.
Uh, Mr. McEnoya, would you please state your name and address for the records, please?
Jisam McEnogia.
Great. And your address?
Thirty-five Cadence Court, Richmond, Texas, seven-seven four-six-nine.
All right, sir. Do you have any additional information that would like to give us?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, honorable mayor, it's a great opportunity. Thank you. I'd like to start with the eight conditions that are required for a specific usage permit. In addition to that, I'd like to add on a few rebuttals from the building code and planning and zoning that have just made. First one would be.
Forgive me, Mr. McEnoya. You have to forgive me. I forgot to let you know that you have three minutes.
Sure. I'll be brief.
If you run short, let me know, and we'd be happy to accommodate you.
Thank you. First condition is that the specific usage will be compatible and not injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties or significantly diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity. The facility, forty-seven oh-five Magnolia, has been abandoned. It's vacant for the past three years. Our goal is to revive that location, not only to remodel the building and the parking. Our goal is to revive that location, not only to remodel the building and the parking spaces, but to provide entertainment for the local community that has been suffering from COVID and being placed in homes. Uh, it's entertainment that we're trying to facilitate for the enjoyment of the public. Uh, secondly, the design and location of the arrangement of the driveway parking space was, uh, claimed not to be in compliance. However, our claim is that there is total of twenty-eight parking spaces with two driveway entries that will accommodate easy traffic flow and proper adequate parking spaces for our clientele's. To address the, uh, distance requirements for Lucas Elementary, the regulations from the gaming site off of the City of Beaumont ordinance states that it has to be within three hundred feet. From our location to the Lucas Elementary is close to approximately fifteen hundred square feet, so we do meet that requirement. Furthermore, uh, neighborhoods that are around the vicinity that, uh, the city's claiming to be of nuisance, uh, we like to disregard to that because the city has authorized a total of five known game rooms that have quite a few neighborhood surroundings, and they have been in operations for close to four to five years, from our research. Um, lastly, I'd like to address the city on the four oppositions. To be quite frank, notices were sent out to them to be attending the meeting and present their rebuttal. However, I have yet to see any of those four members here today to actually make claims against this business. I believe it's unfair and convenient for them to just send letters and make statements when we have this forum here once a month to address concerns for our city. That will be all, council.
Uh, thank you. Let me ask you something, explain to me, what is this gaming business? What is it that you do, and what, what do people do when they enter your facility?
Great question, sir. Our objective is to provide entertainment for our clientele. It's no different than a bingo facility. Uh, clientels will come in, they will play on our arcade machines, enjoy the entertainment, talk amongst friends, vent about work, life, uh, it's a good all fun. We provide entertainment, refreshments for our clientele's. It's just, uh, good entertainment and, uh, relief from stress. That's our objective.
What is the age limit?
Age limit is twenty-one or above. To enter the facility.
You have security, what kind of security?
We have two security guards, one will be from nine o'clock in the morning when we open till ten o'clock. At nine, pro, one hour prior to closing, we have two security guards available.
Is there a inside or outside?
We have both. One will be inside, and the secondary will be outside patrolling.
All right, let me, uh, let me ask you this. Did you submit this analysis sheet to the city with your application?
Yes.
Okay. You yourself said on item number one that your application does not meet, and it's not in compliance with number one, and now you're saying something different?
Uh, the conditions, preliminary conditions judgment was issued by the Planning and Zoning meeting. Uh, we were never allowed an opportunity to explain or elaborate on those not in compliance till today.
Okay, but you, you're the one who submitted this?
No, sir.
No.
No?
That was through the Planning and Zoning.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, let's see, so when, when people come and they get entertained, do they win anything?
No, councilman, it's, uh, completely entertainment, it's, uh, for no prize value whatsoever.
No prizes or no prize value?
There is no prizes nor any prize value.
So they just sit there and throw money in the machine?
It's a form of, uh, mostly credits, like, uh, the person with the highest winning. It's, uh, entertainment for them to, it's no different than playing a arcade machine.
So what do you get with the credit, nothing?
Um, we have, uh, food service, uh, we have, uh, beverages that we provide to the clientele's, but, um, it's, there is no strict, there's strictly no prize value whatsoever, redemption.
Any other questions for me?
Are you gonna floor everybody? Are you gonna floor everybody?
Of course, yes.
Come here.
We probably are looking into a staff of six, that's not to include the security, two security personnels. So we'll have a staff of approximately eight people total.
For the folks in the audience, we will get to you one at a time, I'm, I'm not gonna forget you.
I have a question.
Continue, please.
Are you familiar with the research and, uh, peer-reviewed review articles by scholarly professors in criminal justice of studies as it relates to gaming rooms with fifty machines or more and criminal activity?
Uh, yes, councilman, I am aware.
You are aware that there is a indication, an indicator that crime goes up in game rooms with fifty machines or more, according to, uh, peer-reviewed review articles by scholars and professors in criminal justice?
I have, uh, heard of those peer reviews, I have never, uh, actually read any of them, to have a conversation with you about, but, um, with any businesses, there's risks, just like there's risk with any gaming site, um, or any bingo facilities. Our objective is to minimize those criminal activities. For example, in this area, if you look right adjacent to the property, there's a car wash. My two weeks of research going to the property, uh, I've noticed a lot of, uh, pedestrians hanging out in those facilities because it's so abandoned. We believe that if we renovate our facility, uh, not only on the exterior, but also on the interior, and do proper lighting in that whole facility, it will reduce criminal activity. It will prevent people from loitering around the areas. In addition to having good security and well-trained employees, along with, uh, our alarm systems and, uh, panic options, we believe that we can run a successful business, not only keep the area populated, uh, but also restricted from doing any loitering in the area.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McEnoya, uh, I looked at your drawing, and it's real strangely laid out, but, you only show twenty-one machines that are fairly close to each other in an enclosed space, but you're asking for fifty machines to be there. Where are you gonna put the rest of the machines?
The facility is, um, approximately twenty-two hundred square feet, councilman. And, um, initially, when we were doing the submission of the survey, we were following the eight guidelines, which only discuss the exterior roofing size and parking spaces. This survey is old, and we had not updated it to show the actual fifty machines on here. That's because the requirements given to us didn't ask for machine placement on the survey.
Adina, has the engineering looked at the fifty machines and required parkings for that?
They did look what was on the site plan, but we did request an updated, um, floor plan showing where all the machines would be located, and we were told that since we did not off that, ask for that in the initial application, that he was not willing to provide that.
And how long ago you asked that?
We asked that, um, well, it was about, I said, two or three weeks before the first time this was supposed to come before you.
Okay. All right, so, uh, do you, why would you not submit that to the city? Because you know by the time of construction, you have to go and get that approved by the city traffic and everybody else.
Uh, we submitted our application, councilman, um, this was, uh, beginning, uh, towards the end of July. And, uh, we came to find out August seventeenth that the meeting was postponed. It wasn't after the August seventeenth meeting that they had requested an updated survey. And, uh, we felt as if, uh, we submitted all of our requirements. It was, uh, not required based on the eight conditions of the survey.
The eight conditions are just minimum requirements, but when the city asks you, you're gonna, you're gonna have an establishment that has fifty machines in it, and you show one that's only got twenty-one machines, it kinda gets the traffic and everybody else confused of if you're complying or not.
Right, um, we can...
So you say right, but you didn't do it.
Um, I'm sorry, councilman, we felt as if it was not, uh, a requirement based on the application criteria.
Uh, anybody else on the commission that has a question?
I have a question, you, you talk about, uh, how this will provide entertainment in a time of COVID, et cetera. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, um, a lot of folks...
What are you gonna do about COVID and keeping people apart and that, et cetera?
Sure, sure, uh, we run all of our facilities, uh, in the guidelines of the Governor Abbott, where we have, uh, twenty percent capacity limits. We keep, uh, sanitizations of all the stations, all the gaming playing sites during and when vacant, machines are vacant. In addition, we feel that, uh, a lot of folks are confined in their homes due to the current situation of COVID nowadays. And, uh, people wanna get out more often, and things like bars, restaurants are kinda limited. So, uh, for entertainment purposes, for stress relief, for, uh, you know, getting to meet friends and families, it's a gathering, um, type of event hall. So, we feel that it would, uh, bring a form of entertainment in the area, get the neighborhood together, and, um, have like, uh, nice gathering for the community.
I asked that question because I, I looked at the blueprint of what you provided us. And then I did quick math, fifty machines, six feet apart is three hundred feet. Can you spread out fifty machines in this building?
Uh, we don't expect to have, uh, a full capacity in the gaming site. In the, uh, event, um, we limit our memberships based on, uh, the occupancy, and, uh, we turn off machines based on the distancing requirement. So if a person is sitting, let's say, from machines one through five, we'll have three space gap, six feet or more distance. And those machines will have a sign stating that the machine is not of use right now. And so we spread out all of our clientele's, uh, in a safe distance, uh, to make sure that, uh, we comply with the governor's orders and the city's ordinances. We do have...
McEnoya, in, uh, your neighborhood that you live in, how many of these do you have?
Uh, I live in Sugar Land, uh, councilman, and, uh, I have none in my area.
Do you have experience with other gaming facilities?
Yes, councilwoman, uh, we have, uh, um, ten years of experience, um, from, uh, two other game rooms in Baytown, as well as, uh, Lamarck. And, uh, we have, uh, numerous gas stations, uh, in Beaumont, as well as Houston, where we have gaming machines.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, now we're gonna open the floor to the, uh, to the public. I would ask that you would, whoever that wants to talk, you need to come up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes, and, uh, we'll go from there. So, anybody that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
I'm great, how about yourself?
Great, if you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's gonna be Felicia Stanfield, seven-six, seven-zero, Homer Drive.
Ms. Stanfield, I would love to hear from you.
Yes, uh, actually, I am one of the participant in the gaming, and pretty much what the gentleman was saying. First of all, it's not a lot of people in at one time. I'm actually from Houston, I've been here three years. I have yet to be able, and I don't have a lot of family here or whatever. And for me, it's beneficial because I got a chance to get outside and meet other people, not always in a club scene or, you know, something of that nature, because I'm not really into that. I like it because most of the time, it's a lot of older people, uh, it's quiet time, it's, uh, and over the years, because I, when I came from Houston, I guess when they first got, they had a lot of crimes and just different things, but as the time has settled down, um, it's more of an enjoyment. You have a security guard at the door, pretty much watch if you're going out, they got cameras where they see. And it's like any other thing in life when it comes to you putting your money. If there is no discipline, then you're gonna go overboard, whether it's a machine or shopping or whatever it is. And I just enjoy it because I don't really have personal family here, and I've got the chance to meet some real good people.
And what do you win when you play, Ms. Stanfield?
Uh, you just get, it's, I think it's a mental thing. It's just the ideal, you know, you say, if I get this before you get it, just like any other gaming. Like, if you go to arcades and you got two friends, comfort, uh, and it's not, you know, you get your name on this theme. But for us, it's not more about the winning or the money, it's just being able to be in an atmosphere where people are relaxed, like, you know, if it's, you wanna vent, you wanna talk, or sometimes just to encourage people. It, it's, to me, it's, it becomes a bad thing when, um, there is no, you know, they let everybody in, anybody can come in off the streets. When you have regular people that you see all the time or whatever, it just creates a totally different atmosphere.
All right, thank you, any questions for the lady?
Got some money to vote?
No, outside the money you put in the machine.
Nothing to return?
No, you don't get anything.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? You have something to say, ma'am, or? You had your hand...
I did, I had my hand up, and, and the question that I have is that, he so generously is coming to Beaumont to offer our citizens recreation, why isn't he doing it in his city?
All right, uh, no. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against, Mr. Neal?
I'd like to add to it, I would ask that you guys unanimously vote against this, it's not the type of entertainment we want in Beaumont.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, sir, uh, you had one positive, uh, comment, and you have one negative, so it's your turn to rebuttal. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on.
I'd like to say that, you know...
No, 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 wait, you wanna speak, you need to come up here and introduce yourself, please. That way, we have a record of who was here.
Yeah, my name is Brian Williams.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams, what is your address?
Nineteen seventy-five North Street, um, I'd like to say that, you know, it's, it's good for entertainment. Like he said before, you know, we're able to get out the house and be able to, you know, be entertained, you know, a- and, and he's keeping a safe distance between everybody.
Okay.
You know, um, I don't see no riffraff, nothing around, around, is, is, you know, none of his establishments, I've been to several of them. And i- it's just, you know, it's entertainment, you know, it's, it's better than going to a club. You know, it's social. I got to say, I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta go for it, you know, yeah, because I'm entertained, but...
Thank you, any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else? We're gonna close the... Yes, ma'am, good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon.
If you would state your name and address, please?
Tamisha, single ten, four-ten East Church Street. All right, I'm going along with the rest of them, like, I feel like it's no problem with them having it, like, it's really like enjoyment or whatever, like, all you see is smiles when you go in there, everybody's happy. Like, it's just somewhere to be, like, it just, it's like a, a second home for me. It's like real fun, like, it's like, you know, you feel protected when you in there, like, you don't have to worry about anything. Like, it's like, when you playing or whatever, and like, it's like people going against people, whatever, like, it'd be like, you get food and stuff like that, it's really just like a little hangout spot where everybody chill, talk... it'd be like, you get food and stuff like that, it's really just like a little hangout spot where everybody chill, talk. You know, everyone laughing, it's no fighting or anything, everybody like socially distancing each other, like, is, I really agree with what everybody's saying, like, with, you know-
And you live in this neighborhood?
Yes, actually, I stay in the south area, I stay in the South Park area.
Which is how far from this place?
Um, it's not, it's not that far, it's like, you can get to my house off of MLK.
You gotta get on a bus or what?
No, I drive.
You drive? So it's more than two hundred feet?
It's like four miles from here, miles from here.
Do you know this gentleman from before?
No, I, no.
Okay, you never talked to him before?
Never.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the lady?
Yeah, I have, I have a question, because I, I'm starting to scratch my head, like, you put money in these machines and it's like playing a slot machine in Vegas.
It's just fun, like, you get beverages, you like, you get food and-
Do tickets come out like at Chuck E. Cheese when you, you know, when the kids go play or?
No, no. Basically, we just play all day and winning back and forth, whoever the highest and all that or whatever. You basically getting like, you get beverages, like, food, like-
Are these alcoholic beverages or?
No, no alcohol, no alcohol, no alcohol, I don't even drink. It's like different drinks or whatever and like, food, basically, everybody just go there to have a good time. Like, it's, we go there to have fun, like, people coming there, they smiling and, you know, people, we done, I done met a lot of people, you know, like, people coming there and, like, they don't even be, you know, they get the knowing people that they never met before and like, everybody just go. Like, it's just fun, like, it's just something to do, like, it already got the virus going around, like, it's just too much right now.
So it's just a social aspect, is what you're saying?
It's just somewhere we go to have fun, really.
Yeah, I think if I was gonna put my money in a machine, I'd go to the Golden Nugget, at least try to get something back out of it, I'm just curious.
Oh, I don't drive like that.
So where do you play now?
Uh, one at a time, what, what are you talking?
I'm done.
Okay.
Well, I can't buy my own food. I eat, I eat this and I go home and eat. I can buy my food, it's just, it's just somewhere to go to have fun.
Where do you play now?
Huh?
Where do you play now?
I've been in the stores, so, I've been in the stores lately or whatever. And since this been going on, like, I probably haven't been in like, two weeks, so.
So how did you hear about this one?
Oh, word by a friend, so, and I just feel like I should come.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for participating. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Maconoya, you had one lady that said that, why don't you have this in your own neighborhood? So you might wanna come up here and tell us.
I have a, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just have a question for him too.
Uh, to address the two oppositions, um, the first one being, why do not, why I do not have, uh, gaming sites in my city? Um, I do have, uh, gaming sites in my city. In, not in my neighborhood, but in my city.
Okay.
Um, I'm a Houstonian, I have two successfully permitted operated game rooms, uh, in Houston. Um, one being in, uh, the Baytown area and another being in Lamarck. Those both have been successfully been running for over five years. Um, in addition to that, I have a total of six gas stations, uh, branded gas stations, Cruzen, Valeros, in Houston. Uh, we have minimum required machines in those facilities, every gas station we build, we have gaming machines in those. Um, second opposition was to the gentleman, uh, stating we do not want game rooms in our city and it should be completely shut down. Um, may I remind the council that, uh, there are over a total of ten game rooms in the city of Beaumont? Uh, give or take a few, and, uh, all being around some sort of neighborhood or, uh, high traffic area. And they were given the opportunity to establish their business in accordance with the city ordinance. We are here today to request the same opportunity and the same chance to run a successful, clean entertainment business as our other, um, competitions.
You understand none of those have fifty machines in it, right?
Um, to the few that I've went into, uh, I've seen close to around forty machines, to the approximate. And, uh, maybe one or two having fifty quantities.
All right, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I just have a question for you, sir. Is, um, the location that we're talking about now today, is it open?
Um, no, you are, the locations are not open, um, based on the ordinance. We have to go through the city ordinance approval, uh, then there's a further long process for building code requirements.
I'm familiar with that, it just sounded like a couple of the people that, that spoke, uh, acted like they had been there. It just sounded like they had been there before, so I would, that was my question.
No.
So you're not open?
No.
All right.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Did you buy the property already? Are you leasing it or do you plan to purchase the property?
Um, based on our negotiations with the property owner, we tried to, uh, reason with the property owner to, uh, give us a break on the rent until we get our specific usage permit and our gaming permit. Um, due to his financial constraints and stuff, he wasn't willing, so we started our rent beginning of July.
So it's gonna be a lease?
We did a initial lease for six months and, uh, uh, once we do receive our permits or gaming site permit, we plan on using our option to extend.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, we have heard from the, uh, the city staff and also the participant with their comments. Uh, I'm not sure how many of them are, are within the two hundred feet of the property, but, uh, we also have heard from the applicant. Uh, the, uh, public hearing is closed, everybody had a chance to express their opinion. Uh, with entertaining motion, uh, to proceed.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I recommend a, uh, denial of the request, please.
We have a motion to deny. You're seconding that? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor to deny, raise your hand. Any in opposition? Okay, so it's denied unanimously, thank you. Uh, Adina, what's next? I'm sorry?
That's all.
That's it.
That's it.
Oh, okay, no more fun? Okay, Madam Mayor?
Thank y'all for coming, we are adjourned.
We didn't have to do the co-.
I'm sorry. I know.
I, I would just about wanted to say disregard this.
I got about, I got about eight machines, I lost with the gas station.
Yes.
Put it in the church.
Absolutely, play makeovers, watching out for the game.
It's entertainment, we just wanna socialize.
So if you win, you get somebody points, you get so much cash?
You get cash.
No, 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 you get a candle or, or, well, no, seriously, you get a candle or, or a candle or some plastic, it'd be just fine. And then you give it to the guy.
And then he give you-
That's like, no words near words, I think.
Oh, no.
Yeah. That fourth inch would pass around a few times a day.
And I wanna say something. You know what God is, so you- And we got to- Because you're coming all the way from Sugar Land.
Because it's a moneymaker, and, and his address is Richardson.
Right.
I didn't figure that one out yet.
Yeah, but you're so nice to wanna come and entertain the people of Beaumont.
And he has another one.
And when I tried to make you friends, because we needed to get, you know, floor plan showing where the, she taught me, I was told that it was above my education level to redesign plans that I needed to get over it because I was just a paper pusher and need to-
Oh, you said it.
Oh, I wish you would've said that.
You should've said that.
Oh, you should've said that.
They heard me all the way down the hall telling me, telling me how stupid I was.
Next time, please give that information.
I'll be here on the twenty-first for another game room in Washington.
Oh, that's my warrant, oh. That's my warrant.
Yeah, I, I, I'll agree with that one.
I was trying to be very nice, but now it's not working. Please, please say that when he comes back. Because I really won't be nice, that, that way.
Well, that was interesting.
Yeah.
I couldn't ex-
You think he, he brought, he like, he ran and said, hey, if you shut up on-
Come on, yeah.
If you shut up on, you'll get free food and that kind of- I think that's probably what he did, something like that.
I know, I think we all expected the opposite of him.
Yeah, we were all like, you, what? Now, where did you come from? None of them lived there near the property.
Right.
So then none of them got notices, and you know they didn't see the newspaper.
Yeah.
So, he managed to, he managed to put word out to private, to privateals somehow.
Yeah.
If you'll go up there, then we'll, you'll get free tickets or free something, you know, I mean-
And he just walked right out of here.
Gee.
Ah, yeah, that was funny.
It could've been more obvious if you tried.
Right, okay. Fuck, I'm forgetting something, is it left? Got the labels, turned off the TVs, oh, turn this one off.